Agency Formation Commission, today's date is October 11th. It's Friday at 12 noon. I would like to start with a call to order and a pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, made divisible with liberty and justice for all.
If you happen to be watching on TV, we have Dublin behind us, but we are the Alameda County Local Agency Formation Commission. Could we start with a roll call, please?
Yes, Chair. Chair Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Faria.
Here.
Commissioner Hubbard. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Marshawn. Absent. Commissioner Miley. Commissioner Splendorio. Alternate Commissioner McCorriston. Alternate Commissioner Tam. Absent. Alternate Commissioner Von Heeder Leopold. Alternate Commissioner Warner.
Here.
Let the record reflect, roll call has been taken and we do have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. It's my pleasure and honor to welcome a new commissioner here to Alameda County LAFCO. His name is Mike McCorriston and he is the current mayor of the city of Dublin. And he will be filling the position that was appointed as an alternate through Alameda County Mayor's Conference. So, welcome, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there any other comments on that? Okay.
Just welcome, we're so good to have you and, you know, we're excited for you to think what your LAFCO had and we're happy that you'll be attending this first meeting and we'll be able to vote. So, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Rachel.
Yeah, but we are, we are speaking on behalf of the entire Alameda County. Let the record reflect, we have another member that just joined us. Public comment, this is a chance for anyone in the audience who may address the commission on any matters not listed on the agenda. And within the jurisdiction of Alameda County LAFCO, we do ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. And I have one speaker under public comment, Virginia Chang Curley. Virginia, welcome. From a sister LAFCO organization.
From San Mateo LAFCO.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you for welcoming me today. Good afternoon, as Chair Brown said, my name is Virginia Chang Curley and I am one of the special district representatives for San Mateo LAFCO. I'm running to be your coastal region special district representative on the Cal LAFCO board. And I'm honored to have the support and the trust and the confidence of San Mateo LAFCO as their nominee. I have the privilege and honor of serving on two special district boards in San Mateo County, the San Mateo County Harbor Board of Commissioners and the Menlo Park Fire Protection District Board of Directors. My professional background is in financial research and investments and is a former senior director of the NASDAQ stock market. I've also been with, I've also been involved with advocacy work for my two elected boards and for nonprofit boards such as the California State Parks Foundation Board on which I served for 13 years. Cal LAFCO has a wonderful opportunity to play a bigger role in advocacy work at the state level, especially when the need for collaboration is greater than ever among local communities dealing with housing, transportation, public safety, infrastructure, essential services and the like. As a fire board director and a harbor board commissioner, I understand the breadth of the coastal issues from wildfires which affect the entire state of California to maritime issues for infrastructure needs and local economic development needs for California's fishing industry and equally important farming and agriculture, which are big parts of the district I represent on the San Mateo County Harbor Board. The opportunity for LAFCO to be more involved with advocacy at the state level is one of the many reasons I would like to serve on the Cal LAFCO Board as the special district representative for the coastal region. Of course, as LAFCO, Cal LAFCO moves forward in this strategic direction, there must be an inclusive process that has integrity and transparency. As a former member and foreperson of the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury, I have ensured that good government accountability and transparency are part of local government. I believe in an inclusive process and independent thinking that represents the coastal region and will bring these qualities to the Cal LAFCO Board. Today, I just wanted to simply introduce myself to you and to let you know that I'm proud to be a candidate for the coastal region as a special district representative for the Cal LAFCO Board and would be grateful for your support. I have actually given this, these public comments to Rachel and she'll pass them out to you. My contact information is on there, so if you have any questions, feel free to contact me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming today and we wish you the very best of luck.
Thank you.
All right, that's my only speaker card under public comment, unless there's a fresh one coming right now. Just inked.
Yeah.
We have one to have a comment.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it, thank you. All right, well, don't sit down, Mr. Abrew, please welcome. You have three minutes to speak on items not listed on the agenda.
Yeah, it seems like the, the LAFCO Board has been composed largely for many years of LAFCO geeks and the LAFCO geeks, it's, it's been kind of boring for them. They've had to pick up their cell phones and watch them for, for, rather than paying attention during the meetings. But the board composition, which I brought up at the last mayor's conference, is a concern. We just heard about the coast, representing the coastal area, whatever. Well, Alameda County is divided by a mountain range. Down, down the middle, it's the coastal foothills and known as, you know, San Old Pass, Mission Pass, the Dublin Pass, whatever, Dublin Grade. And on one side is 80% of the population. And on the other side is the other, the rest of it. But in LAFCO, it's the reverse. LAFCO is weighted towards the eastern end. And, you know, when you look at your municipal service reviews, you'll notice that you, there's 14 cities and 80% of the population that you reviewed was west of those, of those mountains, outside of the Tri-Valley. This is a Tri-Valley centric organization. And I, and I don't know why we don't have our, our Dublin, our Dublin supervisor here, who, because it's in his backyard today, I'm sitting in his council chamber, so, standing in his council chamber. So, we need some representation over on that side. And the excuse, the response I got back was, oh, well, you know, nobody cares about it over there. We don't get any volunteers from over there. That's not how it works, you know? If you don't get any volunteers to be supervisor, you've set up districts and then you, somebody will run for that district. You know what I mean? You have an expectation of balance, of equity, of inclusivity and representation. And this board doesn't have any of that, thank you.
All right, thank you. That is my last speaker card for open public comment. I'm going to close the public comment period, which is Agenda Item 4, and move on to consent items. We have four consent items on our agenda. They're normally passed with a single vote and considered routine in nature. Do we have any questions on the consent? I have no speaker cards, so would entertain a motion.
Can move approval of all four items.
So, can that?
We have a motion made and seconded. Can we take roll call vote, please?
Yes, Chair. Chair Brown. Commissioner Faria. Commissioner Hubbard. Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner McCorriston.
Yes.
Commissioner Miley. Commissioner Splendorio.
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Now, Agenda Item 6 is a final report on the countywide municipal service review on community services. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The, we will review the final report on the countywide municipal service review focused on community services. This report has gone through a thorough public review process and has incorporated feedback received since its draft presentation in May. The MSR provides an independent evaluation of services such as street maintenance, lighting, library services, parks and recreation, mosquito infecter abatement, lead abatement, and broadband services across the county. I will have our consultant from RSG speak today and provide an overview on that presentation. And then we can have commission discussion and feedback and then open the public hearing.
Good afternoon, Chair Brown and fellow commissioners. For the record, Carol Eromeman, associate with RSG. So, RSG was chosen by Alameda LAFCO back in July of last year to assist in the preparation of the municipal services for the community services, the municipal service review and the sphere of influence update. So, before you today is the second and final report of the municipal service review for the 14 cities and 12 special districts, including the county service areas that provide community services ranging from street maintenance to library services throughout Alameda County and of which are listed on this slide. Now, as a reminder, while some of these agencies provide other services such as fire protection and law enforcement, such services were not part of this review given LAFCO has or will complete separate reviews for these services. So, the report was initially presented to the commission in draft form back in May before proceeding with a formal, formal 45-day public comment period and returns today in final form. As part of the formal public review process, LAFCO staff distributed the administrative draft report to each affected agency on May 20th of this year to elicit comments and feedback. LAFCO staff recirculated the draft again on August 2nd. While we received some minor feedback from a handful of agencies, the most substantive comments came from LARPD with regard to the challenges of their property tax sharing agreement with East Bay. Now, to adequately address this feedback, RSG met with LAFCO council in June and has met with LARPD twice to discuss these comments. RSG has attempted to meet with East Bay but was unsuccessful in our attempts to do so. So, in coordination with LAFCO staff, the feedback and comments relating inclusion have been incorporated and are reflected in the version before you today. Now, you may recall from RSG staff's presentation in May, the municipal service review focused on elevated areas of interest for the commission, including demographics, finances, and core municipal services. So, with respect to finances, the report reviews data between fiscal years 2019 through 2023, with the exception of some agencies who did not have that latter year available. So, where needed, RSG used the most recent year. Now, you will also recall the previous presentation included a handful of conclusions and recommendations in step with satisfying the commission's task to make various determinations under statute which are detailed on this next slide. To that point, today's hearing allows the commission to, A, draw on the final report and go on the record in adopting determinations on all factors required under MSR statute and of which are detailed on this slide. And B, allow LAFCO to proceed forward with the sphere influence updates. Now, you may notice certain determinations have been written in bold and red. This has been done to highlight the key determinations that will be revisited in today's presentation. So, we have returned today with a final report that builds upon the earlier draft with all the determinations and conclusions discussed in May remaining. The revisions to the report you see before you today, compared to the draft versions presented in May, largely involve technical and editorial improvements with a few exceptions. But before we cover those changes, let's first revisit the key MSR determinations and sphere determinations that remain unchanged in the report. I'd also like to note that for purposes of this presentation and because we have gone through each determination in detail at our last presentation, our discussion today will be focused on these key MSR determination and sphere determinations. So, begin, beginning with the key MSR determinations, we'll look at the first one, which is involving determination 1 for population growth and housing. So, this largely remains unchanged for the agencies, although RSG staff has made ministerial changes to the figures for some agencies, which will be detailed shortly. In general, it has been determined the population in the county is expected to increase over the next five years along with the housing supply. It is further determined the cities are planning accordingly for such growth as identified in the respected housing elements and general plans. The same applies for special districts and their respective planning documents. And the second key MSR determination that we'll revisit today is involving determination number 3. This is for capacity of facilities and adequacy of services. Generally speaking, the agencies are providing adequate services to their residents and have both the capacity and the resources to accommodate future growth. However, there are some areas of concern specific to the cities of Albany, Berkeley, Oakland, and San Leandro that have at-risk street systems as identified by the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. In addition, all cities also have significant deferred maintenance costs that pose a challenge. Another concern which we discussed at the last presentation called attention to Castlewood CSA, whose residents express concerns about the quality of services being provided by the district. All right, and the third key MSR determination that we will revisit today is determination number 4. This involves financial ability to provide services. So, this largely remains unchanged for the agencies, albeit some additions to the conclusions for LARPD and East Bay's tax sharing agreement, which we will go into more detail shortly. Overall, it has been determined that each agency has the financial ability and capacity to continue to provide services to their residents with the exception of the challenges posed for the cities with those deferred maintenance costs. And now, as for the key sphere determinations that remained unchanged, these follow on the next two slides. So, starting with the key sphere determination, which is determination number 1, this involves present and planned land uses. So, similar to the MSR determinations, the agencies are anticipating and planning accordingly for future growth with the notable identification of prime agricultural lands that lie within Livermore's sphere of influence. The second and final key sphere determination that we'll cover again today involves determination number 3 for present capacity and adequacy of public facilities and services. So, it has been determined the agencies are providing adequate services within their respective spheres with the exception of the identified street improvements needed. All right, now, let's get to the topic of the revisions or changes to the draft versions before you today. So, there are additional conclusions and recommendations as well as revisions which are summarized on these next few slides. I shall go over each in detail, starting with the revisions and additions to the MSR determinations. So, one notable and ministerial improvement comes in response to the commission's direction to revisit the housing and demographic figures for the agencies, specifically to MSR determination 1, which you may recall involves growth, population, and housing for the cities. So, RSG staff reviews, reviewed the housing and related demographic details for each agency and updated these figures in the agency profiles where needed. And using the hell, the county's housing element plan for 2023 through 2031, we have also added a detailed accounting of the historic and potential housing sites for the unincorporated areas or portions of the county, which we have found predominantly lie in the San Leandro and Hayward areas. And as we briefly touched upon earlier, the other substantive changes to the MSR determinations you see in the reports before you today involve the tax sharing agreement between LARPD and East Bay. So, based on the feedback from the commission in May, the final version of the district MSR includes the addition of a section that is specific to the tax sharing agreement between LARPD and East Bay. And this section details the agreement in, in terms of its intention, the allocation of property taxes that are to be shifted from LARPD to East Bay, as well as the key terms and conditions of that agreement. Now, the additions to this section also highlight the impacts that EREF has had on LARPD and concludes with a recommendation and consideration for the commission, which we will cover shortly. But for context, at the May meeting, the commission was informed of the concerns expressed by LARPD with respect to their property tax sharing agreement with East Bay. And for those who may not recall the specifics or who were not present at that meeting, it's boiled down to LARPD's concerns with their ability to financially support large-scale maintenance operations and belief that the money that East Bay is receiving as a result of this agreement is not being equitably reinvested back into the community for the benefit of Livermore's residents. So, in light of these concerns, at May's meeting, the commission expressed their heightened interest in uncovering more details pertaining to the tax sharing agreement between the two agencies. Specifically, the commission wished to better understand the amount of revenue East Bay collects as a result of the agreement. So, with the assistance of the county auditor, RSG was able to confirm that East Bay has received over a sum total of around $110 million since 1993, with the most recent fiscal year amount equating to 7.7 million. But to put these property tax shares of LARPD into perspective, after EREF and the East Bay shifts, the county auditor controller reports that LARPD received around 4.7% of the property taxes for its services, and this was in fiscal year 2022 through 2023. Now, this is very close to the 4.8% received by a similar type of district, which is the Hayward Area Recreation and Park District, who also saw or experienced a reasonable or sizable reduction due to the EREF shifts. However, Hayward is not having additional shifts to East Bay. So, in fact, so in this context, it does not seem that LARPD has a significantly lower amount of the property tax revenue based on this data. And putting it into another perspective, on a per capita basis, LARPD actually receives around $132 in revenue per resident, while Hayward received around just shy of $75 per resident. And now that we have a better understanding of the property tax money going to East Bay, it is important to note that LARPD's concerns have been prevalent for some time and the district has made various attempts to engage East Bay regarding the agreement, but with no success. LARPD also sought LAFCO's assistance back in October of 2009, wherein LAFCO, or LARPD general manager at the time, Tim Berry, requested LAFCO's input on potential reorganization options. In response to this request, LAFCO offered up four options, which included dissolution, consolidation, divestiture of LARPD's power, and/or becoming a subsidiary district. Within this letter, LAFCO identified the last two options as being unlikely feasible, given under the divestiture option, LARPD's powers are only parks and recs, so that would seem more of a dissolution in that event. And under the subsidiary option, this would require the city of Livermore to be the governing body and would require consideration of annexing lands extending beyond the city's limits and which at that time was deemed most likely unfavorable. Lastly, the letter discusses the need for a new property tax sharing agreement under either reorganization option and details the LAFCO process, while concluding that the existing tax sharing agreement with East Bay and any potential impacts that would occur due to the reorganization would be best answered by the county auditor's office. So, while LARPD explored these options at that time, no formal action was pursued. A copy of this letter was distributed to the commission in advance of today's meeting. All righty, now, getting back to the revisions to the district's MSR and with all this context in mind, the final version of the MSR includes a recommendation for the commission to not only encourage but facilitate the discussions between LARPD and East Bay regarding the possibility of renegotiating the property tax sharing agreement and considers the potential for conducting a special study to further explore the intricacies of that tax sharing agreement as well as the overlapping boundaries between the two agencies, especially if negotiations between the two do not materialize. And now, to wrap up this presentation, I'd like for us to revisit the proposed sphere of influence updates, recommendations, and the related revisions to that section of the MSRs. So, much of what you saw with respect to the proposed sphere updates in the version from May versus the version before you today remain unchanged and are reflected on this current slide. However, there is one exception which will be covered shortly. So, you may recall, all the proposed sphere updates for the city's MSR involve the city of Livermore and identified four separate areas of interest, which included the Crosby property, which involves two parcels that collectively make up around 187 acres of territory and is situated right between the city of Livermore and the city of Dublin at the base of Dualing Canyon. Now, the two cities are working collectively with LAFCO to propose a sphere update that would link the two communities. However, RSG is recommending LAFCO to not make any changes at this time. The second area involves Los Colinas, which comprises four parcels that total approximately 105 acres and are located north of Livermore Avenue. Currently, the site has been approved for a conditional use permit by the county for cemetery, mortuary, and funeral home services or uses. While RSG recommends LAFCO encourages the city of Livermore and the county to negotiate an appropriate sphere change, RSG recommends LAFCO not to make any changes to the sphere at this time. The third area and final area that remains unchanged for the sphere updates involves territory located on Greenville Road in which the city of Livermore is looking to align its sphere with the South Bay Aqueduct's boundaries, natural topography. The city, by way of its general plan update, has explored potential non-residential uses, including life sciences and office uses. RSG recommends LAFCO approve this change upon a complete ever, a change of organization application to ensure the city's sphere aligns with its planned land uses. And now, tying back to that one exception referenced earlier, this involves a single parcel located off West Jack London Boulevard in which the draft version presented in May was included as a potential sphere update with the recommendation for LAFCO to approve the change. However, the commission has since approved this boundary change request, so we have removed it from the recommendations. And in terms of changes to the sphere updates, there is one notable change to the special district's MSR, which, while the draft version presented in May did not identify any areas warranting amendments to the sphere for the agencies nor any related boundary changes, the version before you today involves one change involving LARPD. So, this addition is, is a result of feedback we received from LARPD, where the district requested annexation of its northeastern corner as reflected on the map shown on this slide. So, given this territory is presently within the sphere for Livermore as well as the residents in this area already using their park facilities and there being no other park providers to the area, RSG recommends that the commission approve this boundary change request upon a, upon receiving a completed application. Right, and to conclude, let's just revisit the final recommendations proposed by RSG and done so in coordination with LAFCO staff. We'll begin with the first three recommendations that remain unchanged. So, the recommendations that are remaining involve, A, for the commission to encourage the county to initiate dissolution of the Estuary Bridges, Castro Valley Library, and Dublin Library CSAs, given all these agencies have zero spheres of influence and are not actively providing services. The second remaining recommendation is for the commission to further explore the overlapping boundaries between East Bay and LARPD. And the third and final recommendation remaining in the versions before you today is for the commission to further explore the quality of services being provided by Castlewood CSA. And then, to wrap it up, the only new or revised recommendation that's in this version before you today and as we went over briefly is for the commission to facilitate those discussions with LARPD and East Bay about the renegotiation of their property tax sharing agreement. We also included consideration for the commission to further explore the intricacies of the tax sharing agreement and overlapping boundaries by the two agencies via a special study. And before concluding, I would like to, on, on behalf of LAFCO staff and RSG, give special recognition and appreciation for those agencies who did provide their comments and feedback. Their participation is very much appreciated. And with that, I would like to turn it back to you, Chair Brown, for any comments or questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the commission?
Clarification.
You please, yes.
Could you go back to the slide where you talked about Livermore and the park? Just for clarification, I, I must have been zoning. I just want to understand the objective of this slide, what, what's going on, that's all.
Of this slide?
Yes. Yes, please.
So that portion, the northeastern corner, is it's within the sphere, but it's currently not within Livermore's boundary. So the district would like to essentially work with Lafco to annex that territory into the boundary.
That far court quadrant, or wouldn't it, it's not even a quadrant, a little?
Yeah, the lighter shade color area.
Whole light, the whole part of that? And that extends from where to where, just for my edification, into off of five eighty and how deep towards its neighboring city?
I would need to get a more specific map to.
Or I'm off, I'm totally off. This is way east, right? This is totally east. Let me, it's like, when I look at this, I go, oh.
That's, that's.
Okay, no, it's totally in the wrong area. I now, I was able to figure it, and that's why I asked you about this, just for clarification. So I'm good. You answered my question.
Okay, wonderful.
Can I do a follow-on then? Is it inside the urban growth boundary that has been voted on by the residents of Livermore?
I'll defer to Rachel for that, I'm not sure.
Right now, yeah, I don't, I don't think it would all be within the urban growth boundary, but it is, you know, a district providing parks and recreation services.
But outside the city's urban growth?
I believe a part of it.
Way outside.
Way outside.
Okay.
That's, that, you, that's in the Altamont.
Right, so.
Top of the Altamont. Way east.
I guess I really don't have a detailed understanding about how LARP D makes their decisions. Just a moment, to, but any kind of annexation would require voter approval, then?
It should not, given that it is a district separate from the city.
Okay. The district has different guidelines than the city. Interesting with parks districts, okay. All right, thank you. Thanks for the question. Any other questions?
I have.
Questions? Okay.
I bet it's serious. As you might imagine.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna start with the easy one. And I'm sorry, I've been here a long time. M R V A CSA. I'm sorry, I, I mean, I know every other CSA I'm familiar with over the last several years. I just don't remember that name. And I looked at the map like, still can't figure out where it is. It's you? You live there?
I, I had the same concern. I didn't know where it was, so I did some research, and it runs in Hayward Cherryland area.
Okay. Thank you. Was it called something different before?
No.
God, okay, I just must have gone right over for years, and I apologize. That was the easy one, sorry. I think they're gonna get harder, I hope, or maybe boring, probably both. Okay, let's talk about broadband. I, I'm pretty sure I'm the commissioner that wanted this on for our MSR review. And I'm, you know, am I disappointed that we, you know, have issues in Union City, Fremont, San Leandro? I mean, I live in eastern unincorporated of the county, and I, I mean, it's incrementally getting a little bit better, you know, I mean, it's better than having carrier pigeons, but I guess my question is, what, is there anything Lafco can do to, I mean, and the reason I wrote, raised this in the first place was, you know, I mean, I think we all know, we all have our phones, this is the way people communicate, and, and having accessibility, whether you're a student to anywhere, to a senior citizen trying to get healthcare by, you know, video. I mean, we need it, and I, that's why I raised it a few years ago. And so I think it's important for just our quality of life. So is there anything we can do? Are there any resources? Can, I know we can prod, we can encourage, but you know, I, is there, that's my, my basic question. I'm glad we pointed it out. I'm just afraid we send it to the city or we send it to the county and they go, yeah, not our problem. Go talk to Comcast or somebody else.
I will say, given that this is our first review on broadband services, this is kind of our first time monitoring it, so we will be following up with the cities and, you know, making sure how they will implement and better provide services to that area. But I don't think that, or I wouldn't recommend the commission making any swift changes now until we revisit it again to see the progress that has been made after this service review.
Okay, but my question wasn't about changing, it was what can we do?
I, we can, I mean, until we revisit it again, we can offer to see if another district can provide those services. You know, I, I don't see any way that we would suggest reorganization, because I don't know if there's another district or if the county could provide services, but that would be something in Lafco's authority. It would be to reorganize and see if another service provider could provide those.
Okay, well, I, again, I think my, I mean, this is something I care a lot about, as I, I just, I mean, some of you know, I sit on the Alameda Health System Board Trustees, and some of our folk, not, which doesn't serve here, but serves on the other part of the county, and you know, a lot of our patients are, this is the only way that they have to talk to a physician or to an, and not having accessibility is important in my mind. So I don't want to see the same thing care here.
And then also, you know, just excuse me, Commissioner, but a special study can, you know, be conducted to look in more thoroughly at who would be the best service provider for those areas.
Okay, and I, and I do, I think Bob was gonna raise something, but I know, I think Representative Swalwell may have a little money to push things out Eastern County. I heard a little bit about, or they said it was a bill passed in Congress a few years ago about providing better broadband in rural areas, so maybe we'd get a slice of money. So I, I mean, I understand there's money out there. I know that that's where you're going with Bob, but I can defer to you, but I got a lot of questions, but go ahead if you had something to add there. Oh, sorry.
You know, having worked in telecommunications for a lot of years, I kind of understand trying to subsidize the rural areas from the, from the cities, but what makes, I want to understand the Lafco process a little bit better, because this is in the county's jurisdiction, right?
Part, yes, part of it.
So now Lafco would in some way be telling the county to engage with a different service provider and then force that service provider to provide services? I'm not, I'm not quite sure I understand the process here.
In a study or a further review, Lafco can see, you know, potential providers and recommend the county follow another one or contract with another one to provide better services to that area. That could be one way. Also, I mean, given Lafco's authority, it really would be consolidation, dissolution, reorganization, so that would have to be carefully reviewed.
Well, what that means, if I can translate that, that means some neighboring city annexed the area?
It could possibly provide an out-of-area service agreement. I mean, that would be stretching it, but trying to look at other service models that would work. Annexing, who knows, that might be something, a subsidiary district, something like that, or, you know, figuring out what other district provides those services.
All I guess I'm trying to get to the, cut to the chase here. And we can do a special study, but just my understanding of the economics and everything, are we really thinking there's a solution here?
I, that's why I, I think it needs to wait until we review this again, but a special study might be able to just look at different service providers that would provide something, and then the commission can make a recommendation saying that, hey, you should contract with this service provider. They have better coverage.
Okay, I think I understand it, but I'm saying before we would authorize a special study, there should be some plausible reasoning that says it's gonna end up in anything useful. In some ways, I mean, this is, you see what I'm saying? You can authorize a special study to spin your wheels, but why? I just, let's make sure we think that there's a, a solution that's plausible.
So there have been a number of municipal efforts in Alameda County to provide broadband, so they, they might be worthy of study. The city of Alameda at one time offered broadband services. City of San Leandro had a sort of interesting public-private partnership model for offering broadband services. I, I don't know if those, those are viable, or perhaps they are lessons learned, but there are models out there that, that have existed at one time.
And I think as Commissioner Splendorio said, that the thought that there might be some money coming from somewhere to solve this, that's, that's important, and that's a possible avenue, but I think that any study would have to seriously look at the potential for money coming from somewhere, and that's because it has to, right? Because it isn't free to provide the services, somebody has to pay for it. So I think what Commissioner Splendorio said is one thing that should be included in any review of that is, how do you get, how do you pay for this really? It sounds like it might be a solution.
Okay, we'll return the floor back to Splend.
Thank you. And really, I mean, my, my really principal focus was the, was the more densified here, like Union City, Fremont, and San Leandro, because that's obviously the, to me, the bigger need is in those urban areas. I mean, you know, I think people expect to have access to broadband, and the fact that they don't, I mean, if you live in a rural area, that I can understand that, but it just, that's what was more disappointing to me than anything else, seeing that these cities were on here, and I'm, I guess what I want to hope is that we enforce the message to these cities that there is, you know, their residents may not be receiving the same sort of quality of life and opportunities that others in the county get. So anyway, all right, let me move on. So I appreciate all this, and, you know, and I apologize, I was not here for most of the May meeting, so when this first came through, and, and I see, you know, we have David First and Matt Fuzy from LARP D. I don't know if anybody's here from East Bay Regional Park District, so our, really, our purview here is to try to encourage a discussion, and I know what you're, what you, what you're, you're finding, that maybe there's not much of a dispute, but in their minds, there may be, and I think to the extent we have the ability to bring parties together and try to, you know, at least hash this out a little bit, and I, and I do want to confirm, Andrew, that really our only authority here is really change of boundary. I mean, it's, at the end of the day, right? I mean, we don't have, we can't force them to talk to each other, but we can encourage, because the only thing we've left is change of boundary, right?
Changing boundary and activate or deactivate services.
All right, so, so I don't know if we're gonna have public comment, but I mean, I guess that's.
We do have public comment.
So let me, let me get some more questions here. On, on, and I do have a follow-up. So you mentioned about hard not having the same issue? Is, so is that accurate? So this issue is really, if there is one, is between East Bay Regional Park District and LARP D, but not with hard?
It does not have any allocations being shifted to East Bay. It's just LARP D.
Okay. As to the recommendation on Castlewood CSA, I mean, I'm, have some familiarity with that. I've, I've seen some of the discussions of it. What about other CSAs that are more urban? I know they have Five Canyons and other. Are there maintenance or infrastructure issues there that we're not seeing? Or is it just Castlewood, or are they just the loudest voice? And what's going on there?
We've just received the comments from residents about their concerns, and I think it really ties down to a lot of those roads being private, and, you know, Castle, them feeling that Castlewood's not maintaining them as they should be with what they're paying for. Outside of that, I don't know any other specific details. Maybe Rachel might have something to weigh in, but that's my understanding.
Okay, all right. I think, all right, so these are, I am, there was a time when we did not have a duck, a disadvantaged unincorporated community. Ashley is now being identified as a duck, is that?
It's identified as a duck based on income alone, but they receive all the services, so we just list them that, you know, they would qualify as a duck for income, but they're receiving all the municipal services.
Okay. All right, so I have other comment, but this is much more of a question. So, may not known this, and this is something mentioned in history. So there's a portion of Alameda, the island of Alameda, that is not in the county of Alameda. I don't know if you knew that or not. If you want to find the slide, you can, I'll point it out to you. And I understand the only way to fix that is through state legislation, and I'm not asking for anybody to do anything to work. I'm just curious, maybe I'm just raising it again, you know, are we, do we ever want to fix that? That's something on your radar. I don't even know if Rachel even knew that.
Does this have to do with the city of Alameda or next, next to the bay for San Francisco County?
It's in San Francisco County. There is a portion of the island of Alameda that is in San Francisco County.
I mean, it's definitely on our radar. It just depends the will of the commission and how much we should focus and expend resources on that.
I'm just raising, in case, I just, it's always so strange.
Your last question?
That's it, thanks.
Any other questions? I have one, if you don't mind. I am familiar with Castlewood somewhat, and they've been in the news lately about a sudden jump in the cost of drinking water. Is that, is that part of your consideration when you look at public utilities? Is also drinking water, not just roads, as you mentioned earlier?
I think we focused just on the street.
Yeah, so this study is just focusing on community services, like parks and recreation, street lighting. Unfortunately, the study didn't look at that. Our study in two thousand twenty-one did, but it didn't capture that rising cost at that time, so it's something we will have to revisit.
Yeah, I think their number was a hundred and seventy-two percent increase in water. It was a significant, because of infrastructure work that needs to be done. Okay, that's the last of our questions. I'm gonna open the public comments. Thank you very much. Stay nearby. Our first speaker is David First, and David is from LARP D. To our meeting.
My name is David First. I'm the chair of the board of directors of the Livermore Area Recreation and Park District. I first want to thank the commissioners, the Lafco staff, and the consultants for their hard work and time and energy in developing and modifying the MSR. First of all, LARP D accepts the MSR as written, and we may request a special study if our negotiations with East Bay, with the assistance of Lafco, are not productive and in the best interests of our taxpayers. And we do request Lafco's help in facilitating these discussions between the two agencies. I want to briefly highlight two examples of why these discussions are so important to the taxpayers of our community, and where East Bay has not fulfilled their obligations based on the requirements of the tax sharing agreement. In the final report on page forty-one, it quotes East Bay's responsibilities. It says, "East Bay was or is responsible for the acquisition, development, and maintenance of future regional parks and open spaces within the same area, that is Murray Township." The statement is correct, but it's incomplete. What the tax sharing agreement actually says is that East Bay is not only responsible for the future regional parks and open spaces, but also, quote, "trails" within Murray Township, "subject to, quote, 'the availability of financial resources.'" Trails are to be developed based on the master plans of both districts, which list a multitude of regional trails, but in the past thirty-plus years, East Bay has not developed virtually any of these regional trails. They receive millions of dollars a year, but they have not acquired or developed regional trails in Murray Township. We do not think this is due to the lack of availability of financial resources. Specifically, the LARP D purchased property that connected LARP D's Sycamore Grove to Del Valle. The trail connector was built, and what remained was the bridge connection to Sycamore Grove. The bridge cost one point two million dollars. East Bay had the obligation to use one-sixth of one year's tax revenue to fully fund the bridge. However, they contributed only a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, resulting in a three-year delay before the money could be raised from other sources. In summary, and again, the LARP D accepts the MSR as written and appreciates the work that went into it. We request Lafco's help in arranging meetings between the two agencies to productively discuss changes in the current tax sharing agreement. We've already reached out to East Bay and have refused to talk with us. We therefore need Lafco's help. These meetings should be arranged as soon as possible, since each month of delay costs tax revenue that could be spent in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, our next speaker is Olivia Sanwong from East Bay Regional Park District. And if you could state if you are. And if you could state if you are representing the district today or as a resident?
I am representing myself as an individual. I'll share. So good afternoon, Chair Brown and Commissioners. I'm Olivia Sanwong, the elected representative for Ward Five of East Bay Regional Park District. This ward covers eastern and southern Alameda County. And, you know, I just want to start by saying you may know my predecessor, Anne Wieskamp. I know she served with many of you on this commission, following a really long distinguished career with East Bay Regional Park District. She also served on the LARP board and Livermore City Council, and she has been instrumental in regards to me understanding this community service MSR process and also really coming to the conclusion that really at the core of this conversation between East Bay Regional Park District and LARP is how we manage open space in the greater Livermore area, also seen on maps as Murray Township. I want to address a few things. This really, this topic really wasn't brought to my attention until August of this year. So no one from LARP has reached out to me personally, even though I am the representative, the elected representative for this area. And, you know, August was a really trying month for us at East Bay Regional Park District. I did lose one of my colleagues, Ellen Corbett, who died on August 9th. And so I do want to mention that within the context of this conversation. So while I know there wasn't a response from East Bay Regional Park District, it has been a really trying time since August. And so I apologize for that delay, but I'm here today just because I know this is a really important conversation that we're having. In regards to that overlap of LARP and East Bay Regional Park District and really thinking about managing open space, I did submit an email last night that's a little bit more in depth on this topic to each of you as part of public comment. And it's quite a prolific email, I know, but it's really important to get some of that information out. After submitting that email, I did stumble upon your, what is it? LAFCO's Fire Protection Emergency Medical Services MSR. And I just want to highlight that East Bay Regional Park District is the same agency that's in that MSR and in this community services MSR. And while I know that the scope of this current community service MSR isn't about fire protection, really when managing open space, particularly in the greater Livermore area and eastern Alameda County, it is about wildfire mitigation and managing wildfire risk. And I, if there's one point I want to make clear, you know, one thing that we've been doing is investing in our air support unit, which we have now moved to the Livermore Airport. And this is so important, both for search and rescue, as well as for our ability to respond to wildfire situations. And I, I think that we, as Californians, all know that, you know, wildfire risk, it remains one of our top concerns in the state. I know we have a property insurance crisis happening right now. And, you know, this is something that's at the top of East Bay Regional Park District's work plan. And I think that that's really critical when talking about this Murray Township, this greater Livermore area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next speaker is Mr. Kelly Abreu. Kelly will be followed by Mr. Pete Sandu.
I think we just heard that the H A R, the Hayward Area Recreation District gets 30% money, less money per capita than LARP. So the, you know, the fact that LARP is getting more, but then giving away some of it back to the East Bay Regional Park District, probably puts them on a par maybe with H A R D, right? Per capita recreation expenses. And then this idea of the Livermore, the Mountain House, remember that, that slide that we just saw with the upper right corner? Do you know, when, when you expand these things, you move your boundaries around willy-nilly, just because it looks like a nice 90-degree corner. You have to ask right angle corner, why, why? Who are you serving out there? And I have a theory, it's Mountain House, and Mountain House is not in this county. So, you know, why is LARP expanding the service boundaries to provide better services for Mountain House or for Tracy? Or for Brentwood or for whatever, you know? This is, you know, this is what I'd be asking if I was in Livermore. And then this idea of Ashland that appears about 60 times, the words Ashland appears 60 times in this. And what about the word Sonola? Or what about the word, you know, San Lorenzo, all these unincorporated areas? This, this thing was specially crafted to exclude unincorporated areas. We just say, oh, that's being served by the county. You did no detailed analysis of what the 10% of Alameda County's population is in the unincorporated areas, and you guys do nothing for them in this report, except for a little bit of lip service. And you say that the county is taking care of them. Well, if you talk to them, they'll, they'll tell you that that's not exactly true. Then the Livermore Sphere of Influence expansion, this, is this just a way to bypass Measure D? You know, expand the sphere of influence and so that urban growth boundary and so that you don't have to worry about Measure D anymore? You can just, and then when you go to the, the California, the, the, the state aqueduct, you know, the, right there east of Livermore, then what's to stop you from going to the bottom of the foothills next? Then what's to stop you from going to the top of the foothills? Why not just keep moving the line? There's lots of geographic boundaries out there, you know? I got, I got more, I got right at the bottom of the foothills, right? It's all flat land and then, but that would be a nice area for Livermore to expand to, right? And then this idea of the broadband. You know, low-income neighborhoods have a broadband access rate of 59% compared to 87% in the high-income neighborhoods. Majority black and Hispanic neighborhoods have 10 or 15% lower broadband access. And the issues there are affordability, digital literacy. We learned this in the pandemic, right? Does anybody remember what we learned about urban areas there? Anyone who's not on their cell phone? The language barriers, barriers and profit-based discrimination. Thank you.
Great, thank you, sir. Pete Sandu, and Pete will be followed by James Boswell.
Hey, thanks for, thanks for having me and allowing me to speak. I'd like to speak on behalf of East Bay Parks and the, the efforts that they've been making in the Livermore community for the Livermore residents and taxpayers. Like Olivia mentioned, they recently moved their air unit to the Livermore Airport in the beginning of May. And since they've been here, it's been a dramatic impact on our community. That first week they were here, they used that helicopter to rescue a hiker that was lost for three days in the Aloney Wilderness. They put out the, assisted in putting out the Coral Halla Fire and the Creek Fire, but they single-handedly put out the Altamont Fire, the, the Shadow Cliffs Fire. In the past, they put out the Pleasanton Ridge Fire, the Mount Diablo Fires. They put out more than half a dozen fires since they've been here in May. Many of them, those fires don't have names because those little fires didn't turn into big fires. That is a big deal. Their response time is fantastic now that they're here on this side of the hill, and we love that they're here. They're in a temporary facility now. We're looking to build them a more permanent facility. We're, we're glad that we have at least a, you know, they're a CAL FIRE contractor and that, we're glad that we have at least that. Because the Santa Clara Unit of CAL FIRE is the, has the least amount of equipment for fighting fires out of all the, the units in California. It has one air asset, a helicopter, that has been at the Los Gatos, at the Lexington Reservoir in Los Gatos all this time. They need a new hangar. We'd love to have them move to this side of the hills, because that helicopter, half of its, its territory that it could, it could reach in a reasonable amount of time is out over the ocean. CAL, according to CAL FIRE's own maps, the hills south of Livermore are the highest fire risk in the entire state of California. And we're further away from a firefighting airplane where you're sitting right now than any other square foot in the whole state of California. We need to resolve that. East Bay Parks is looking to resolve that. We're trying to build a, a permanent facility and make this a permanent home for them. That facility is, is looking to have three bays for firefight, wildfire firefighting trucks, three bays for aircraft and a police patrol unit. And that's all in one facility at Livermore Airport, serving the residents and taxpayers of this community. What's, what's, they're, they're pursuing additional equipment for, to enhance their rescue capabilities and their medical transport capabilities, including the capability to transport gurneys to Level One Trauma Center. We don't have a Level One Trauma Center in the valley. You got to go to Eden Medical Center in Castro Valley. We all know how bad traffic is on 580. We know how long it takes to get there, even with lights and sirens. Few cars pull over and you keep going. The response rates of the only two ambulances that are stationed in the East County are atrocious. The, I've heard from Chief Young, 45 minutes?
Time is up.
Okay. While I'm available, you guys all know where to find me. I've got lots more information than I could tell you in three minutes. Thanks for the time.
All right, thank you. James Boswell is our last speaker. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Good to see you all, and many of whom I know. I'll, I have a finite amount of time. I'm obviously, some of you know me as, I'm on the Board of Directors for the Park District. In this particular, my comments are not our board's, we've made our decision, presented the information. But I'm representing as a citizen in the area of Livermore, a couple of key things that I noticed. I have, I fought those fires, so the issues are way bigger than what you presented. So we'll get into that. As far as the helicopters are concerned, there, there's two helicopters encountered after 20 years in law enforcement. There's two more in Alameda. Those are totally underutilized, another issue altogether. But back to the issue with East Bay and LARP. The, the problem is, is that that started 30 years ago, actually 40 years ago. And the result is, let's just get to the facts, and I'm not going to make any comments about the MSR other than to say that the issue is $110 million has, has crossed the transom over to the other side going to East Bay. Those are nominal dollars. If you add the, the time value of money, it's 200 million in excess. The amount that we paid back, in all fairness, we gave them back $6 million. So you do the math, 200 million versus 6 million. What did we get for it? Nothing. Those are the facts. I've been working on this problem for a year and a half. I know the issues. I know the problem. The fact of the matter is, is that what we got in return for that 100 million, if you use nominal dollars, very little to nothing. The, the issue was that Murray Township got annexed in 1991, 92 by East Bay Regional Park, just out of the blue. As it is today, we basically have, have, in the upper right-hand corner that you saw, that got annexed out of the blue about 10, 15 years ago. No work was done on it. The people that live there send their kids to Livermore schools. They use the Park District programs. The point is, is that the inequity of the tax sharing revenue never even went to the public. The Board of Supervisors, when that agreement was made, said no taxes will change hands, period. Period. We'll codify the agreement, send it up to the Board, State Board of Equalization, send it down to the county. But no taxes will change. Why did they say that? Because it wasn't necessary. That's a fact. Here we sit. Now you tell me, is that a good thing? That 100 million buys a lot of stuff. It is actually costing us in Livermore $660,000 a month.
Mr. Boswell, your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public comment, period, and bring it back to the Commissioners for comments, thoughts?
Okay.
Would you, yes?
I'll go first. Yeah. Obviously, you know, first I'll speak to the, the Park District issues. It's really thorny, okay? And the first question I actually have, maybe of the consultant or East Bay, what was the reason that there was no response to the outreach for information? That's my first question. You don't have to answer this for me. So, okay, so given the fact that there's been a clear reluctance to provide information and the request is for conversations to be facilitated, the first thing I would like to have assurance of is that there actually be cooperation. Because we can say we offer a table for people to chat, but if somebody doesn't want to show up with the facts, that's not helpful. So the set of facts that I think are most pertinent here is within Murray Township. And I think the definition of Murray Township has been kind of loose and maybe not understood. But within those major projects and parks within Murray Township, how much has the East Bay Regional Park District spent over this period of time? Just like to see that accounting. It should be a public record. And then the key question is, how does that compare with the taxes collected from the community? And that I would think that the key question for this study to answer and for these conversations to address is, are adequate services being provided to measure it with the resources collected? And I frankly, you know, this thing about, oh, we do a lot of stuff in a lot of places, is not sufficient. You need to have the numbers. They should be available. And I, you know, this last recent, I'll just say, stuff about fires, everybody's concerned about fires, yes. But that's somewhat of a red herring here and not the point, I believe. So I, I would say that's what we should do. And if we're going to suggest a facilitation, we need to have some assurances that the parties will actually cooperate. And if not, if we don't have those assurances, and I think the first assurance I would like to see is that the data will be provided so that rational conversations can proceed. And if that data is not provided, then I think we need to have a special study and then proceed with understanding what the appropriate boundary should be. And I think the key question here again is, the money is available. Why isn't it being spent? And you might look at organizations and say, one or the other is capable of providing the services. But the issue that I see is that there's a reluctance to provide them. So I'd like to see the data. None of this fluffy stuff about all these other things, the hard data.
Right, any other comments?
Well, I have some.
Would you?
Yeah.
I knew you had a from earlier, so. Okay, please.
First comment, I'm sorry, this may be a little bit random, but so on the Los Colinas in Livermore, we make, in the report, we make a point that for Greenville, that that would require an amendment to the urban growth boundary of Livermore. Yet we don't make the same comment, the Los Colinas, and I don't think that that area is within urban growth boundary. I just don't know why we, for some reason, is that just missed or? Seems to me you should be consistent.
Okay, agreed, but just to say, we're not recommending any sphere of influence changes throughout the whole report, but noted on that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, this is, again, maybe I should have caught this if I was here in May, but I just thought that was inconsistency. Oh, okay, now, so. And I'm not, this is, I'm just pointing things out that just seem maybe inconsistent. You know, we want to keep the spheres of influence basically the same, yet most of the communities, if not all of them in Alameda County, have an urban growth boundary. Why didn't we align, I shouldn't say why, I mess in the wrong, because I'm not advocating one way or another. I just want to know, is that a thought process? Should they be aligned or not? I mean, if you, the history of, of the Act, the reason for spheres of influence may be outdated or may not be outdated. It just, to me, it just raises the issue and inconsistency in my mind is, is if, if, if the citizens of Alameda, of the cities and the, and the county want to maintain urban growth boundaries, why should we even have spheres that extend beyond those urban growth boundaries? I mean, I think there's good reasons too, but if that's not the will of the people, should we think about that? And should we reflect that will? Again, I'm not asking for an answer. I'm not going to make any motions or anything like that. Just, it just seems inconsistency to me. One more. And I, and I do wish that we do spend more time monitoring Ashland and seeing how that hopefully, and I understand because of income, I get it, and maybe that's not much we can do about it. But it's just something we, I would like for us to stay on top of.
We are always monitoring Ashland, and we just did the Castro Valley fiscal analysis that gave a good breakdown on the services that were provided. And I just want to also state. And I just want to also state that the spheres of influence is for cities match the urban growth boundaries.
Okay, thank you. And just following my question regarding the Castlewood CSA. You know, I know there, that there are a lot of residents there or have issues, and they probably rightfully so. I just wonder if, if we were to do, if we are going to end up doing some sort of study, give me some options that that, we take a bigger view than just Castlewood and say, look, could do some work that could help other CSAs that may confront the same problem in the future? I mean, I just don't believe that they're the only ones that are having infrastructure issues. I mean, they, I mean, we have heard in the past of others, especially around, obviously Hayward and things like that, but I just think we should think a little broader than that and say if we can utilize some of that study and help those other CSAs. And then my last thing, and I raised this last meeting about the annexation, you know, that was this property along Jack London Boulevard. And I, and I asked at the time, I said, you know, we approved it, annexation that was in Pleasant Sphere, we took it out of Pleasant Sphere. There's another parcel there that may someday go into some, may develop some way somehow. And we're keeping it, although there was a time many years ago when we suggested it be a joint sphere, and you, I know, I think I mentioned to Rachel, I don't even know what that means, if that's even possible. And I'm not, again, I'm not advocating, I'm just saying that, that I asked if Pleasant would come and explain how they could possibly service. And this all goes back to the same thing about urban growth boundaries and spheres is, you know, if you want to annex, you're supposed to have, you have to serve it. And, and to me, that's an example, that parcel on Jack London that is in Pleasant Sphere, and I still can't figure out how Pleasant would ever service it, at least not today. Obviously Livermore could because the road is right next to it. But I get it, to me, it's just a more of a, more broader question of when we have these policies that we think, that we consider that, you know, if you're going to annex, you have to service it, or if it's in a sphere anticipation, you have to service it, you have to think about that way. And maybe it's more of a mindset than anything else. So those are my comments. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Right, oh. Attorney, we have a combination of members that are alternates and members that are not alternates here today. And I want to make sure, and I should have done this for the consent calendar, that it's very clean about if there's duplicate members that are here and their alternate is also here, so that we take a clean vote. So in your recommendation, is there anybody here on the board, we don't have anybody calling in today, that is unable to vote on this item?
Commissioner Warner would be unable to vote because Commissioner Splendorio is here.
All right, thank you. We don't have.
I can't vote either because
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Districts are here.
Still have a quorum then.
Correct, you have four members.
Thank you. All right, I just want to clarify that. We still want your opinion. If there's any. All right, so at this point, we do have a recommendation from staff. We've had a good discussion. Many really good points were brought up. Would you like to summarize that maybe in a motion, or do we want to have staff come back with additional information and the request to have the parties work together?
Well, I mean, I appreciate that, Chair. I mean, I want to move the staff recommendation, but I want to be sensitive toward this, you know, issue between LRPD and East Bay Regional Park District. And, and I don't know if removing it or reserving it makes sense or feel, or the rest of the commission feel comfortable in that regard. If that is a sense, I, you know, I would include that in the motion that we remove it from approval and hold it, I don't know, for two months. I don't know how long, but some period of time. Is that
You're speaking about the tax sharing agreement aspect of this?
Yeah, just that they would get together, or like, or like Commissioner Warner mentioned, you know, have, exchange information that if, if, if that is a lever that is worth pursuing to get the two parties, the two agencies to talk to each other. That's all I'm asking.
I would truly support that. I think from being heavy-handed for legislative status, it's much better to have the two organizations have a seat at the table. Whether it's the seat, would also have a LAFCO representative. I don't know. I think, I don't know if it needs to. What are your thoughts?
Oh, I would, I'd volunteer for that, but the what I was going to suggest
Precedurally, people just have all the time in the world.
Precedurally, I would just suggest you pass the staff recommendations. And then, or, you know, in a separate, clear what the request is, or make it an amendment or somehow, but make it, try and clarify what you would like to see going forward in order to, for this to be successful. You know, make, put a little progress points in mind or something. I mean, that they get together, the information is shared, and that it be done within some timeframe, like the information is shared within a month. So that the conversations can begin, but let's be a little prescriptive of how this is going to get done, because otherwise it's possible for this to just spin on forever.
Good point. Can you incorporate into a motion?
I was, I was going to actually echo what Bob said is, listening to all the information, yeah, I'm new here. But there should be some metrics. There should be something that we're trying to achieve and end one way or the other, for clarification. And I totally understand his perspective, not taking any sides one way or the other, but we need to truly understand what the value proposition is. And what Livermore is getting out of this. And, and I think there's a way that we can incorporate some of that as objectives. So I was, when I was thinking about that, I was kind of thinking what, what Bob was saying is, can we identify objectives at this point?
But to go a little further, is it the responsibility of this organization to determine tax sharing between two organizations that are none of which are a member of?
I wouldn't say it is our authority, but it is our duty to receive a tax sharing agreement before we're able to take commission action on an item such as an annexation or detachment. I, just to intercede, I would say perhaps for the commission to approve staff's recommendation with the amendment that we would hold off for about three months to make sure that both agencies have met. And then from there, receive some type of progress report from staff or both agencies, and then figure out how to move forward, whether that's in, with a special study or facilitating further discussions with the agencies.
So Chair, can I clarify?
So, yeah, I was just going to say.
Don't mind if we had to take a raise.
I was just going to say.
Commissioner Warner.
So just with respect to Commissioner Brown's point, is, I was carefully worded what I said. This isn't tax sharing. I was just saying, how much has been collected and how much has been spent? And this is both organizations, nothing about the share, but just what are the facts? So I don't believe LAFCO should get into what the details of the tax sharing is. It's just simply have an adequate amount of services been provided in comparison to the monies collected in total. And then the other thing, and just to make sure Commissioner Corso understands, LRPD is not Livermore. So when you don't, if you
I shorted it, my apologies.
Okay, just.
Yes, I'm, I'm aware of that.
Okay.
Word Livermore.
But it's, you know, it's a, these are, and not the other thing, the other thing that I think is important is that we get a clear understanding of what Murray Township is. I don't think that's obvious to everybody. And that we, that's what we request, that we, maybe we can, it's appropriate for LAFCO to know what it is. So I would suggest somebody put it together. Now, I don't think there are official maps, but there are official documents from which a map can be drawn. So everybody's crystal clear as to whether Shadow Cliffs is in or out, as an example.
That's a very good point, because Murray Township has historic maps and then current maps. And when overlaid onto one another, we need to know exactly what current maps and current legal maps would reflect.
So where I'm coming from as a scientist type, let's just have the facts, and then we'll have a conversation.
Further comments?
No further comments.
Comments.
Summarize, okay?
All right.
Excellent. Okay, let's come back and see if we can put together a nice motion that summarizes what you've heard and what you stand for.
Okay, my first is for Commissioner Warner about the facts. I mean, I think your reference shouldn't be science, but rather Dragnet. I think that's where that quote came from, okay? I'm old enough. You shouldn't. Okay, so I will move the staff recommendation, except not approval of the SOI for LRPD or East Bay Regional Park District or until our January meeting, in essence, continue to our January meeting, that's three months, I think, more or less. And in that timeframe, that we ask the two agencies to exchange information, provide the data that's been discussed on the day of today, and encourage them to meet and give us some sort of report, whether that's has a LAFCO person involved or not, I'm up for debate on that, if that's something people want. And then give a report at our January meeting, where we can take it back up and decide to approve it or push it further, if there's, there's some point of disagreement.
I'd like a friendly amendment. If I could, I would like to see Commissioner Warner, since he's familiar with both organizations. And they're in his proximate area of service in the past, to have alternate Commissioner Warner have a seat at the table in these discussions.
If Commissioner Warner accepts that, I will accept that friendly amendment.
And he's nodding his head that he will, for the record. Okay, thank you. We have a motion made. Do we have a second?
I want to make a comment. The, the, there's an inconsistency in the MSR report where it identifies in the table of contents, a number of county service areas that are not identified within the body of the report as being the subject of study, although they do appear at various points throughout the MSR, and they are all county service areas that have existing zero spheres. And there's discussion of retaining those. They are, they are not referenced in the resolution, and I wanted to raise that to see if the commission wants to include them within the resolution, and those are the Estuary Bridges County Service Area. There are three Library County Service Areas in Castro Valley, Dublin, and I can't remember what the third one is.
San Lorenzo.
San Lorenzo.
So we want to include that, that we're, we want to consider dissolution of those three, I think it was, right?
Correct.
Okay, I mean.
That's a no change, I believe, from your past.
Correct. The question is whether we act on it, which we haven't in the past. So it's status quo, and we don't need to bore everyone with the fact that
CSA is not
Sorry, for clarification.
Okay, so there are, there are three districts that don't provide any services.
Yeah.
And over the years, we've encouraged them to be dissolved because they don't do anything. I will not, Supervisor Miley is not here. He has wanted to keep Castro Valley in case a pot of money falls out of the sky. And I'm being
facetious.
Facetious about that, but it was, that was kind of a logic. But let's, I, I will incorporate that into the motion that we continue to encourage dissolution of these three special districts that do not at this time and have not provided any services.
So clarification question, if I could, Andrew, like, for example, the Dublin Library.
Right.
It is, it's not a part of this county, but it is, originally it was funded by the county. How, how does that? How, how does that work when we dissolve the district, but yet it sits in a city of Dublin?
County service areas can exist within cities.
Okay.
And that was the basis of my question is, why haven't these actions been taken?
You don't have to lean in for your microphone, I think.
I'm sorry. Why haven't these actions been taken in the past? I'm hesitant to make changes or support changes unless I understand the basis of why it hasn't been done.
It's just been recommended, and staff has never followed up on it, but now we should take the time to dissolve those those districts because they're inactive.
Okay, I mean, we all have, we have thoughts about why, right? There's something called Dublin that I have a particular interest in.
Okay, we have a motion made with clarification. Do we have a second? We have a second, all right. Should we have a roll call of those who can vote on this matter, please?
Down.
Yes.
Commissioner Furia.
Aye.
Commissioner Hubbard, absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner McCorristan.
Yes.
Commissioner Miley, absent. Commissioner Splendorio.
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes.
All right, thank you. Good work, everybody collaborating together. I hope the directions are clear. If they're not, please reach out to our, our director for more information. All right, we're agenda item seven, which is a report on independence and exploring LAFCO county relationship models.
Thank you, Chair. So today we are discussing our own ongoing efforts to explore the possibility of increased organizational independence from Alameda County. The ad hoc MOU committee has evaluated various staffing models and recommends that LAFCO transition to a structure where it directly employs its own staff while maintaining key service contracts with the county. This transition would provide LAFCO with greater flexibility in managing its personal, personal personnel and resources, allowing us to be more responsive and effective in fulfilling our mandate. This is an important step towards greater LAFCO independence. And staff supports the MOU committee's recommendation to move forward with this staffing model. But before we have a motion, we have our consultant, Roseanne Chamberlain, to discuss her findings with the report. And she is joining us remotely.
Welcome, Roseanne.
Thank you. It was a real privilege and an honor to work with Rachel and contact many of the other LAFCOs that in the comparison group that was defined by the committee. I have a lot of experience historically dealing with transitional arrangements where counties have wanted to renegotiate the MOU with LAFCO to allow greater independence for the commission. And although I have been trying to be retired, I very much enjoyed working on this project because I felt like I could do something very helpful in terms of sorting out the information. The key summaries, and I'm going to try and be very brief here, is that the organizational structures among the LAFCOs throughout the state, and in particular, the comparison LAFCOs that were defined for this study, those arrangements vary widely, and they reflect the individual political cultures of the county. For the most part, all of the variations work particularly well. No LAFCO is completely autonomous or separate from its counties. Even the ones that have fully shifted to their own administrative services still have close working relationships with the county in some particular ways that are specified in statute. So there's always going to be a very close working relationship with county administrative staff between LAFCO and the counties. The simplest arrangement for most LAFCO administrative services is through existing county programs and structures. Most of the LAFCOs that we looked at have a memorandum of understanding or other contractual agreements with their counties to cost-effectively provide the highest quality benefits and retirement programs, human resources, services, and so on, for the LAFCO staff as well as the county staff. These, the majority of the LAFCOs are able to successfully retain retirement and employee benefits under the county umbrella programs. An even larger number of LAFCOs effectively An even larger number of Lafcos effectively use the county treasury and auditor services. Some have separate payroll arrangements, but many very successfully use county payroll programs. And in most of those counties, the county treasury handles Lafco as though it was an independent special district. And they accept the actions taken by the commission as binding and in lieu of an action that might have been taken for county staff by the Board of Supervisors. So the conclusion here really is that the optimum arrangement, both in terms of cost and ease of effectiveness, is to have the hybrid that's been described in the staff report. And I think it's commendable that this commission and its committee have worked hard to try to assess what the real options and alternatives are. I would heartily endorse the committee's recommendation to open discussions with county administration about reevaluating the MOU and bringing it up to date and consistent with the statutes as they are now chaptered. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the work that we did, and hopefully I'll have answers for all of those things.
Thank you, Ms. Chamberlain, any question?
May I ask questions and be patient with me? Okay, so you're saying there's operating efficiencies with doing this separately, and it seems like this is a widely done operating, but strictly for operational purposes, or is there more reason for this? First question is, are you gaining operating efficiencies, and second is, are there any other benefits to doing this?
Yes and yes are the basic answers. The operating efficiencies, because Lafco is not a huge organization and the county's administrative structure with its multiple departments and many, many employees are standardized in a way that may not always exactly fit for what the commission's authority and autonomy is in the statute. So the Lafco staff will probably more simplify and easier structural arrangements in place for conducting the day-to-day business using the standardized county protocols, which may be much more complicated in order to fit all the different variations and arrangements for individual county departments. Did I answer your question?
Yes, you did, I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner.
Could I just add to the answer to- Of course. The Lafco is an independent organization. And that's the key driver here for this change. And it's incumbent upon us to have a staff that reports to us and that we properly manage. That's the key driver here. So that we can, and we've frankly had a little difficulty getting that accomplished as if the staff is employed by the county. Thank you.
I had just a few housekeeping questions to, just to understand. So the Lafco employees, would they still have all the benefits of a pension, for example, would that have any changes? Excuse me, Chair, that-
The commission can set up-
Ed, Roseanne, excuse me. Ms. Chamberlain, would you answer?
Yes, I'm sorry, I thought Rachel was going to handle that one, I wasn't entirely sure. The commission has the authority as an autonomous, independent government agency to set up pension and benefit programs that it chooses and is eligible for. And there's a really wide array of those kinds of programs that are available, and in fact, used by some of the different Lafcos. So for example, Lafco could become a CalPERS agency and set up a CalPERS pension. There are several Lafcos, and this may be the majority of the ones that have been participating in the past in the county's SARA retirement programs. SARA statewide will allow the county to provide retirement benefits for affiliated agencies, and Lafco would be considered one of those. In addition, the Special District Association through its SDRMA program has benefits and retirement programs that are available for purchase for any of the member agencies. And Lafco is eligible to participate in SDRMA, it's a JPA. And they've included, under their larger umbrella, having lots of different kinds of districts, and Lafco is included in that group.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Then regarding any kind of health benefits, if we become an independent, well, I'm sure the county has health benefits as associated with a large organization. Would we be able to offer the same health benefits, for example?
Yes, if the county's amenable through the MOU, it can extend benefits that are identical to the ones that county employees receive. They can extend those benefits and make them available for purchase to the Lafco. That's a question of how, what the options are and what the county's willing to do, the same with the retirement program. But there are lots of other options for securing benefits. The Special District Association has benefit programs that are available. Private benefits on the open market could be purchased too, although those probably would not be as good or as cost-effective as adjoining with other government agencies. So it's just a matter of evaluating what kinds of benefits, what your budget is to pay for those benefits. But clearly, the optimum arrangement is to piggyback on the county's existing programs. If the county's willing to include the Lafco employees as members of the broader family of local government agencies that they serve.
Okay, and then we have attorney support from the county, that would continue, I assume?
If the county wants to continue to provide legal counsel services, that could be included in the memorandum of understanding that's renegotiated. It's kind of an à la carte arrangement that is based on what the negotiated services are and what services the commission really wants. There are some Lafcos who've had conflict of interest problems when they historically used county council services. And there are, in, as part of this research that we did, we had one Lafco, Orange, Orange County Lafco indicate that having outside legal contract services is absolutely essential to getting adequate advice and having accessibility. Orange Lafco uses Best Best and Krieger, and I know you've negotiated a contract for supplemental legal services with Best Best and Krieger fairly recently this year.
Okay, a last question, and this might be best directed to our own staff. We need to make sure you have an office and a location. If we become independent from our employee contracts, would you still have an office to hold your-
We would hope to negotiate that in our MOU negotiations, but we would also be looking at alternative or other places that, other buildings that could hold Lafco.
Okay, and just so I understand, what we're off the rising is not a completed MOU, you want to, you want to come back with all these details so that we can make a decision that will fit your needs as well as the organization's?
Correct, so we're just going to follow the MOU committee's recommendation where, you know, Lafco's okay with looking to transitioning as a, the staffing model where it directly employs its own staff, and then authorize our consultant, Ms. Chamberlain, to move on the second phase with the report.
And then come back eventually with a finalized proposal. Okay, well, thank you, that helps me tremendously. Did you have a question?
I just, a question, I'm leveraging off what you said from an operational perspective. I thought those were really good questions. I'd also like to see what the financial impact is on this. When, when you pull away something and you've been integrated into a larger structure, usually there's incremental costs associated with that. So it'd be great if you could share that with the commission as well.
I mean, definitely, I see total costs, okay?
Yep.
Yes, Commissioner Warner.
Yeah, I, I think the key point here is, this was stated by Rachel, is that you know, the commission is authorizing, letting the county know that we desire to have the staff report to us, number one. Number two is, we want to purchase as many services as possible from the county. And it's, really, it's putting the ball back in their court to figure out how efficient we can be. But it's up to their decision, not ours. And then what the implication is, if the county refuses to provide a service, then we have no choice but to purchase it outside. That's the, that's the process we're launching here.
I want to express appreciation to the committee for working on this and continuing to work on it. Seeing no other questions, I have one speaker card, Mr. Kelly Abrew. Welcome again.
Yeah, I strongly support this idea, but I don't support a watered-down vanilla version. And really, the issue is independence versus efficiency. Extending services, which is words that you guys like to use all the time, and exerting control are really two sides of the same coin. And when you expand the boundaries of somebody, like expand the boundaries of Hayward to take over Castro Valley, or you expand the boundaries of Livermore to take over Los Kalina's, you're giving them control, but, but that, that was not, you know, some wild territory, lawless and owned by the Native Americans that was there for the taking. They're taking it from the county. So the county is the loser in these transactions, or the grantor, or whatever you want to call them. So they have an interest in this, and so the question for your staff becomes, who's your daddy? Or as we, as they used to say, is it the county or the commission? Is it independence or, independence or efficiency? God and money, you know, and as my, as, speaking as a, as a, as the person in the pews of the, listening to preachers, no one can serve two masters, for you will either hate the one and love the other, or be devoted to the one and despise the other. You cannot serve both God and money. That's from the New Testament. The county council serves the Board of Supervisors, doesn't serve the county, serves the Board of Supervisors. And when you go and you, and you want to be independent, you say, I want as many services as possible from the county, there's an inherent division there. And that was why the, the Orange County said they didn't want this, they wanted their own county, their own lawyers. And of course, you, you do have, there's no, doesn't seem to be too much of a divided loyalties for your executive director here, Ms. Jones, she's not, she doesn't, her business card doesn't say county administrator or county whatever, her business card says Lafco. But yeah, these issues are very important about who, who's control, who's your daddy? And Mr. Warner, or Commissioner Warner, has this, figured this out very well, he explained all the issues very well, but he's very, very diplomatic, very diplomatic, and, and this council needs to get off your cell phones and just think about these issues. And then I would, you know, adopt all these proposals and then go on and do things where possible. I mean, you don't need an independent cafeteria, but you do need an independent lawyer, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment period, bring it back to this commission for feedback, comments, and/or a motion. Do you like to make a comment?
No.
A recommendation? You've been kind of quiet today, so I thought I'd tap you. All right, do we have a recommendation? Yes, a member of the committee would be perfect.
Okay, so what, come back echoing what Bob was saying, I think that the, the study has shown that, you know, you've got a variety of Lafcos throughout the state that have some degree of independence from the county. You know, we really suffer from the fact that we can't set the staff salary. I think this would be, we'd want to go in that direction. We also want to be able to do this in a friendly manner with the county, hopefully get as many services from the county as we can. We won't know that until we start the negotiations. So anyway, I'd move the staff recommendation for this item.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made, second, and can we take a vote, please?
Chair Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Furia.
Yes.
Commissioner Hubbard is absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner, Commissioner McCorriston?
Aye.
Commissioner Miley, absent. Commissioner Splendorio.
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes.
Okay, thank you, and we're on to our audit report for fiscal year 2022-23, agenda item eight, staff, please.
Thank you, Chair, the commission will now review the audit report for fiscal year 2022-2023. The audit was conducted by O'Connor and Company, and they found no material weaknesses and confirmed that all transactions were properly documented. However, it is worth noting that the fund balance as of June 30 of 2023 was $597,244. And it was reflecting a significant year-end change from the prior fiscal year. I can go into further detail as to why that was. And it's just important that we continue to monitor our financial position closely and make adjustments as necessary to our fiscal health. And I'll return the item to the chair for any commission discussion. I would also like to note that our auditor, Mr. Michael O'Connor, is joining us remotely if the commissioners have any questions directly to him.
I have no speakers, so questions and comments on the audit report?
It's clean, right? Let's move on.
You know, it's a report, we like that. Okay, would you like to make a motion to-
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to accept the auditor's report, and we have a roll call vote, please.
Chair Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Furia.
Yes.
Commissioner Hubbard, absent. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner McCorriston?
Aye.
Commissioner Miley, absent. Commissioner Splendorio.
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes.
All right, agenda item nine is a contract agreement for ACERA, Actuarial Valuation Report. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair, so the next item involves approving a payment agreement between Lafco and the Alameda County Employees Retirement Association for an actuarial valuation report. This report is crucial for assessing our liabilities and obligations if Lafco transitions to an independent staffing model. The proposed cost is $8,500, and I recommend we move forward with this agreement to ensure we have a clear understanding of our financial responsibilities.
I have no speaker cards, I'll close the public hearing and come back. Do we have questions or a recommendation or a motion? A member of the committee, would you like to?
I'll make the motion, yes.
I'll second.
We have a motion made to approve staff recommendation, a roll call vote, please.
Chair Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Furia.
Yes.
Commissioner Hubbard, absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner McCorriston?
Yes.
Commissioner Miley, absent. Commissioner Splendorio.
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes.
Okay, agenda items 10 is matters initiated by members of this commission, do we have any matters initiated? Saying none, I'll close that agenda item, and we're on to our executive officer's report.
No report at this time, Chair, thank you.
Okay, we have two informational items, and those are current and pending proposals, progress report, as well as Calafco Annual Conference coming up October 16th.
Yes, nothing significant to report back, but we're excited to attend Calafco's annual conference, and we will let you know how that went at our next meeting.
We are going to Yosemite, how wonderful. I was there last week, and there was no water in the Yosemite Falls. It dries up every fall, but there is plenty of waterfalls throughout, so you'll have a wonderful time, as well as work, 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 of course. Okay, with that, that's our last agenda item, this meeting is adjourned.